I'd like to call to order tonight's regular Board of Education meeting for Wednesday, February 19th, 2025, here in the boardroom. We could have a little call, please. Sarah?
Nups Ashbeck.
Sarah.
Kevin Blake.
Here.
Amber Teresa.
Here.
Jacqueline Remler.
Here.
Mike Cornish.
Here.
Ron Liberty.
Here.
Paul Prue. John Smith. And Brett Waller.
Right at this time, if you'll join me by standing, if you're able, face the flag for the Pledge of Allegiance. My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the great Father for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to Merrill Area Public Schools Board of Education. MAPS respects the role that our elected board members serve and the function of our board meetings. Board members and administrators are committed to work collaboratively to provide our students with the highest levels of achievement. This is a formal event, and professional conduct is the expectation for all of the attendants, including dogs.
Thank you, Mr. Murray. Next on our agenda would be availability for public comments to the board. I did not have any sheets turned in. Sarah? And we will move right to recognition. A lot of wonderful people being recognized and animals, as stated. So I'd like to start for the board's recognition tonight for Alex Green for helping with a medical emergency. If you haven't heard, on the morning of January 27th, a student experienced a medical emergency on a bus outside of the middle school. By the time Mrs. Yankee boarded, several members of the HEAT team were already assisting the student, and the bus was clear. As Yankee turned around, Alex Green was there calmly letting her know where he had relocated the students. From that moment on, Alex went above and beyond helping to move students from various buses, comforting younger ones, gathering groggy high schoolers, and even checking in on Mrs. Yankee. Actions in this high-pressure situation went far beyond what we could ever expect from a student. Alex truly exemplified the values we hope to see in our students here at MAPS as they grow into adulthood. Thank you to Alex for everything he did in that moment and for the person you continue to become. To recognizing Alex Green. Next, the board would like to recognize Teresa Swickowski for being an invaluable asset to assisting and supporting our MAPS families with housing-related challenges. Teresa is in a housing navigator position through a partnership MAPS has with Children's Wisconsin. She works hand-in-hand with the school social workers, and she works tirelessly to make sure individuals have access to basic necessities. A few words of appreciation from our school social workers. Teresa has a giving heart and is willing to go above and beyond to support families in Merrill when housing does not feel possible. They value her time, thoughts, and her ability to ensure our students are safe and have adequate housing. She thinks creatively and is diligent to ensure our families have all needs met beyond housing. She ensures support continues after housing is secured, including transportation, laundry services, food utilities, mental health services also. Teresa exemplifies a spirit of service and compassion, transforming the lives of the families she assists in creating a ripple effect, a positive change within our community. Teresa, thank you for being an amazing and incredible person. You are an absolute gift to our district. Here's to recognizing Teresa. All right, next, the board would like to recognize Mark Maylos and Therapy Dogs, former Therapy Dog Kiva and current one Tucker, provided extraordinary volunteer services to our schools. They've become an invaluable part of the MAPS community, touching the lives of accomplished students and staff alike. For nearly 10 years, his work has supported and enriched our students' social and emotional well-being in ways words can hardly capture. Mark's Therapy Dogs have brought comfort and joy to children across all MAPS buildings, from helping students read in the classrooms and libraries to providing support in the offices of social workers and counselors. Mark has played an integral role in creating a positive and supportive environment for our students. His dogs have been a source of calm on our playgrounds and have helped students navigate moments of both anxiety and stress. Therapy Dogs like Tucker here and Kiva Prior provided so much more than affection. They help lower anxiety, improve emotional regulation, and create an environment where children feel safe and heard. Whether treating with a reluctant child or offering a comforting paw during a difficult moment, both Kiva and Tucker alike provide therapeutic benefits and support the mental health and well-being of our students. Mark's unwavering dedication to our students has brought immeasurable joy and comfort to our community. His contribution over the years deserves formal recognition. And here we are this evening to recognize Mark Maylos. We already had a few words from Tucker, maybe, and it's gotta be, you can stand here.
Tucker, look. Tucker, sit. Tucker, sit. There we go. Let's see. I'll just turn him around. Are you? Okay, Tucker. Sit. There you go. Nice. And wait. Sit and wait. And look, Tucker, look. Look, Tucker. You. Give him a state command, I mean. Sorry. Oh.
You have to join us.
You have to join.
Yeah, why don't you go? There you go. Nice job. That's it. There we go. Normally, I'd put you on the spot, Mark, but I've done that before. Someone ask Kelly to say a few words.
Well, I appreciate that. I did write down some words because you're very important to our school, Mark. So for nearly every school day for close to a decade, Mark Maylos and his dogs have been a presence in our MAPS schools, never seeking recognition but quietly, humbly serving with a heart fully dedicated to making a difference. What makes Mark truly extraordinary is not just his expertise, although he is a retired dentist and has graduate-level education regarding therapy dogs. It is his deep compassion and the personal connection he brings to every interaction. Mark and his dogs have a truly uncanny ability to connect with the most vulnerable students, offering them something that no one else can: unconditional love, comfort, and the calming presence of a dog. Mark is a true beacon of kindness and knowledge, teaching us all the profound impact that animals can have on the mind and spirit, and reminding us that sometimes the best therapy has four paws and a wagging tail. For 10 years, I've had the privilege of watching Mark's quiet yet immeasurable impact. His work is not just about therapy dogs. It is about hope and healing and the power of connection. We here at MAPS are incredibly lucky to have him as part of our community, and I am personally and deeply grateful for all the love and care he has given our students. Mark, thank you for being a true gift to our schools. You have brought comfort and healing and joy to students who need it most, often when they feel unseen or unheard. Your quiet acts of love have created a ripple effect that will last for years to come, shaping our students in ways that only someone with your heart and compassion could. Thank you.
Thanks again, Mark. Much appreciated. Yep. That's certainly a tough act to follow. We do have some more recognition. We'd like to recognize our following group from Pine River School for Young Learners, the Pupal Service Staff of Molly Hardwick, Christine Bobey, Nicky Tane, Diane Cashman, and Carrie Roth for their unwavering commitment to providing exemplary support to students and families, the dedication they show in continuously evaluating writing and revising IEPs, often dedicating countless hours. Beyond your regular workday does not go unnoticed. Your efforts make a profound difference in the lives of the children and families you serve. Thank you for all you do. Great bunch to work with.
Wonderful humans.
Really like to recognize them, but.
Yeah. It's amazing what they do.
Truly is. Thank you all for everything you do, and your recognition this evening is just a small part of the token of what we can do. Thank you. This next crew is an interesting bunch, to say the least. The board would like to recognize the sixth-grade team of Megan Spoon, Kelly Kraganbring, Cassie and therapy dogs we got to recognize this evening. I want to turn things over to our student board members for their representative reports. Robleski, Kim Dorro, Hannah Ornberger, and Tammy Hendricks for organizing an incredible I'll let Max Black and Parker Wagner decide who's gonna go first tonight. Blue Jay Huddle Assembly. Their hard work in planning, gathering equipment, creating an event that brought students and
Well, it always seems to be me, so.
staff together is truly appreciated. Well, there you go.
This week, FFA has planned both activities and competitions to both raise awareness
The assembly was a wonderful opportunity for everyone to have fun, support one another,
for the club and school spirit.
and build the school spirit. Students had a fantastic time and wouldn't have been possible without the dedication
Activities include the cutest pet contest, blind karaoke, cheese tastings, flower crafting,
and teamwork, the sixth-grade team. Help me recognize our sixth-grade crew.
and a dress-up day. I don't know if I'd be good at the flower crafting, but I know I'd be good at the cheese tasting. Both girls and boys had their regional wrestling meets this past weekend, and Merrill had an outstanding performance. Nine of the boys and 10 of the girls who wrestled are moving on to state, so that's very impressive. And the wrestling program this year is just doing fantastic. There's constant placings, and it's going very well. And also, more regional games. The girls play their regional game for basketball next Tuesday in New Richmond, so hopefully they can advance. Boys still have a couple weeks before their regional basketball game, but they recently had their signing and senior nights. And finally, the DECA Club also had a regional competition recently and have five members going to a state competition to qualify, so that's exciting. And then, for the first time, a trip is being planned for officers to visit the DECA headquarters in Virginia for a tour, so they can learn more about the club from these rooms.
This week is Kindness Week, put on by the Raise Your Voice Club. Third periods and lunches are full of activities like putting sticky notes on lockers, making posters, signing a banner with kind messages, guessing how many Jelly Ranchers are in a jar, and writing thank you notes to friends and teachers. Kindness Week is always a big part of the club's year, and it's definitely noticed around the school with all the sticky notes all over the lockers. On the 25th, juniors will have a class meeting to talk about the upcoming ACT and how to prepare. Dinner and a show will be this Friday, put on by the choir. Enjoy a nice meal served by the performers while the amazing talent on stage shows off their skill with a mix of ensembles, duets, and solos of all genres. There's bound to be something for everyone's taste.
Thank you, Max. Parker, any board members have anything they'd like clarified from a student perspective from high school? Certainly a lot going on. Excellent report. Thank you for that. Much appreciated. Next on our agenda this evening is administrative reports. Board members have had opportunities to question Mr. Murray or the direct administrator if necessary prior to this meeting, but this time I'll turn the table over to Mr. Murray to go through administrative reports.
Thank you. I'll just briefly run through them in case there's any questions or comments from any board members that are present. Item A on this administrative reports list is the Pine River School for Young Learners, including a monthly data enrollment numbers, some health screening information, et cetera. Mr. Martinevich is here this evening. If you have any questions for myself or Ryan. Seeing none, item B is the monthly food service report prepared by Laura Crowsey. It talks about participation levels, as well as her board writes. Any questions or comments? Amber Louska's here this evening. If you have any questions concerning the Director of Pupal Services Special End Report, that focus of that that was shared at CTP at some length was the second Friday of January Enrollment Report, and that report is attached to our self-competition sheet. Item B is the Director of Curriculum Instruction Report. Amanda Patterson is here this evening to answer any questions. Her report focuses on screening for ELAs, some math data, some achievement gap reduction information, as well as some major reporting. Any questions or comments for? Item E is the Director of Finance Report, which includes a budget update from Mark Paul, who's here this evening, revenue expenditures up to this point in time in the school year, as well as some department updates. If there's any questions for Mark, he is here to answer. Item F is the Director of Human Resources Report. Heather Silver is here this evening to answer any questions or address any comments. Her report focuses on our staffing plan, some feedback from her attendance at the state convention, summer school planning, as well as working on health insurance law, insurance law regulations, I should say. Any questions for Heather? Item G is the Director of Building and Grounds Transportation Update, prepared by Nick Zalik. He's here this evening as well. Some updates on some winter maintenance projects, some safety and security issues, and some transportation updates, which will be addressing later on. And item H is the Superintendent's Report. Provide some information there about the state convention that a number of us attended, including Kevin, down in Milwaukee at the end of January. That is always a very worthwhile convention to go to on a great breakout session of current information, everything from law to buildings and grounds, and just whatever topic in between that, but his education, so I'm pleased that we went to that. I don't think I have any more to add, Kevin.
Hearing things, I guess, directly impacting other school districts and some of the breakout sessions, some of the topics that we're just starting to talk about, how is AI affecting the classroom, both from an educator's standpoint to the students, how people have embraced that or feared that, and what that looks like. That was very interesting, and that can tie into anything from looking at it from the perspective of Amanda or from Heather or Amber, looking at it, how it can be useful and how as a tool, if embraced, and in fact, Andrew, on the technology side as to what can be accessed or not. And just, you know, that was really enlightening to me, because we've just started some of those discussions here. But I thought the breakout sessions and the keynote speakers were excellent, well worth my time down there for that, those four days.
I also include some information on our community education. By the way, we have an update. Those classes started last week. We have our first class, and they continue throughout this semester. You may have seen me insert in the photo news with the catalog that has our courses in there, and that's certainly bringing a lot of different registrations for the different courses, and I'm very pleased with how that has shaped up. You know, for us to go from nothing in, probably, August, where we had the concept, maybe July. Our goal is to have 10 courses this semester. Angie Drew has done a fantastic job of building it from scratch and using her available resources, and our goal is 10 courses. I believe we're 32, so I'm certainly grateful for that for the semester, so kudos to Angie and Mo, have her come and present and update herself probably in April. We'll actually be talking about the Pledge of Update, so I'm gonna kind of skip that. That was a discussion, a great discussion at HR Finance Committee last week. And then, just a comment about politics. Politics on the federal level is impacting us in a lot of different ways and a lot of unknowns, and most will be, and most, I guess Brian gets the benefit of being the first out of the chute at Head Start. That was one of the things that came up right off the bat, and so he's been working with his resources, and it's been, it's been a roller coaster, to say the least, and so he's doing a great job out there at Head Start, he and his staff, keeping things kind of steady as things unfold, and so as things develop, we'll keep everybody posted on what that looks like, and so stay tuned for that, I guess. Any questions on any of those things?
Thank you, Shannon. Through administrative reports, we'll talk about committee reports. We will start with Finance Human Resources Committee Minutes. Draft minutes were provided from the February 12th, 2025 committee meeting. Members of the Finance Human Resources Committee are available for questions from board members. I believe most everybody that's here was at that committee meeting, but any board members have questions for the Finance Human Resources Committee? Hearing none, I'll move on to the CTP, or Curriculum Technology Pupal Services Committee. Attached were the draft minutes from that same day, the February 12th meeting. Ron Liberty and other members of the CTP committee are available for board member questions. Is there any board members that have questions for our Curriculum Technology Pupal Services Committee? Hearing none, we're gonna move right on to unfinished business. We're gonna wipe Mark up to the table, and we'll talk about our financial audit for fiscal year 2024. We provided a topic summary sheet tonight. I believe he has someone joining him from Clifton, Larson Allen, LP, so.
Yeah, this is John Traubman.
Parker, right.
He will here give a little brief review of the audit, answer any questions. I provided all documentation attached to the agenda, so if anybody has any questions, John can address them at that point.
Sure is.
Thank you, Mark.
Oh, good afternoon. Do you know anybody?
Again, my name's John Traubman, principal, lead auditor for many years on the school district's audit, external audit. Tonight is really a high-level discussion, informal discussion. I go through a few pages, talk a little bit about highlights, talk about the opinion itself, talk a little bit about where the year ended last summer, and of course, we're already halfway through the year, the next year, so it's always good to look back a little bit on the audit and financial statements. I'll let you know a little bit about some stuff coming down the pipe as far as the new standards, and then open up for questions, and anything else you want me to go over. So obviously, a pretty large annual financial report here, financial statements, so I'll be going through a whole lot. I'll spend my time really on the balance sheet, the income statement, and then talk a little bit about what's coming, and then anything else you want me to talk about in the book or anything else related to the audit, I will be happy to take your questions. If you are following along, I will call up page numbers. It's certainly not necessary. But again, we're talking really about the opinion that we issued June 30th, 2024. That's page one of the document. So you have a huge book. It's got about 70-some pages. We have about four pages in the beginning that is the opinion. That's the result of the audit. So I'll start right there. Again, our opinion that we issued was an unmodified opinion, a clean opinion. So again, we had a little bit of delays that delayed your report related to a couple reconciliation items that we were working through with Mark and your staff, which you successfully got through, so that's good. We ended up issuing a clean, unmodified opinion. So that's really important, and I'm gonna start there, because really, your internal controls that operate 365 days a year, audit takes place once a year, your internal controls are live all year, including today. And what that does is it flows all the information of the district, grants, expenditures, revenues, all through your accounting system and your checks and balances. And what it does is it ultimately ends up with this data that's in the financial statements. And we do make some audit adjustments to those, but again, not a lot of findings, not a lot of issues that we have, so that's a really good thing, that's a positive thing. That also leads to an unmodified opinion. So again, just wanted to start there. That's the result of the audit. Rest of that page goes through various language that's very similar year to year. It goes through our responsibility as your auditor, your responsibility as a school district and management, goes through a little bit of housekeeping as far as the different components of the financial statements. They start at the basic financial statements, which is the very next section, and that is really the, exactly what you would think, the income statement, the balance sheet of your major funds. So I'm gonna start really there on page seven, if you're following along. Page seven is the balance sheet, so that is a snapshot in time. So that is as of June 30th, 2024, a particular moment in time. This is what you have: assets, liabilities, and then fund balance. Of course, assets and liabilities are self-explanatory. That's what you have in the bank as far as cash and investment, that's what you have receivables, or taxes receivable that you have not received yet, and liabilities are your short-term debt, and then your inter-fund payables, and then your regular accounts payable that you would expect to see in the liability. So 15 million in assets for the general fund, 6 million in liabilities. What's left is your reserve. That's the fund balance. There's three categories of fund balance. The total fund balance end of the year, 8,806,000. The three components, there's two really small components. One is non-spendable, one is restricted. Non-spendable is exactly what it sounds like. You can't spend that, you don't have it yet, a pretty small amount, so don't spend a lot of time on that. Restricted is outside, restriction outside of the district, so that's grants and things like that, again, very small amount. And then you're left with everything else, which is unassigned. That's kind of your reserve, that's your savings account, I guess is another way to look at that, that you carry into the fiscal year that we're currently in. We take a look at that number and focus in on that number a little bit, because it's an important number for one, because that's what you have carried over into this year, and that's what you started the year with, but also just to talk a little bit about the health of your carryover, of your reserve. And what we do, and the industry does really to try to make sense of that, is divide that into your expenditures. You get a percentage. Reason why we do that is it takes all the variability of our size out of it, and it says, well, you have, here's about 21% of your expenditures. So you could operate, you know, given 21% of your expenditures without any money coming in. Now, it's not really realistic, it doesn't happen that way, but there is cash flow challenges with all school districts in Wisconsin, and that is, a lot of your grants are not received until well into the year, some aren't even received until towards the end of the year. Property taxes, the way it works in the state of Wisconsin, there's timing issues where, you know, obviously, the August settlement isn't until the following year. So there is cash flow issues. Part of that is, if you glance up, you'll see that 4.5 short-term debt. There's three categories of fund balance, the total fund balance end of the year, 8,806,000. The three components, there's two really small components, one is non-inspendable, one is restricted. Non-inspendable is exactly what it sounds like, you can't spend that, you don't have it yet, pretty small amount, so I won't spend a lot of time on that. Restricted is outside restriction, outside of the district, so that's grants and things like that, again, very small amount. And then you're left with everything else, which is unassigned. That's kind of your reserve, that's your savings account, I guess is another way to look at that, that you carry into the fiscal year that we're currently in. 8,791,000. We take a look at that number and focus in on that number a little bit because it's an important number for one, because that's what you have carried over into this year, that's what you started the year with, but also just to talk a little bit about the health of your carryover, of your reserve. And what we do, and the industry does really to try to make sense of that, is divide that into your expenditures and get a percentage. Reason why we do that is it takes all the variability of our size out of it and it says, well, you have, here's about 21% of your expenditures. So you could operate, you know, given 21% of your expenditures without any money coming in. Now, it's not really realistic, it doesn't happen that way, but there is cash flow challenges in all school districts in Wisconsin. And that is a lot of your grants are not received until well into the year, some aren't even received until towards the end of the year. Property taxes, the way it works in the state of Wisconsin, there's timing issues where obviously the August settlement isn't until the following year. So there is cash flow issues. Part of that is, if you glance up, you'll see that 4.5 short-term debt. So that's part of the reason of that challenge is there's certain times of the year where you need a little bit of extra money to short-term borrow and then you pay it right back when you don't need it anymore. A lot of districts are in that situation. It really boils down right to that reserve. Some districts have over 25, 30% of their expenditures and they don't have to borrow as much. Some have far less than you and they have to borrow significant amounts for significant more periods of time. So that's kind of how that works, that's just a challenge that all districts have faced in Wisconsin. But 21% is a pretty good number, 20 to 25 is considered really that minimum benchmark, so you're within that range. Again, you still have short-term borrow, so that's pointed to that cash flow. That gets up a little bit higher, that can be minimized, but overall, good health there. Page nine switches gears and talks really about the entire year. So that was a snapshot of time, the balance sheet, this is the entire year, January, July 1 through June 30th, 2024, 23, 24. And you can see there's revenues, expenditures, total revenue is 42 million for the general fund, total expenditure is 41 million. And then you have on the next page, other financing sources, which is transfers in, transfers out, there's lease activity there. All said and done, your fund balances changed, went up $148,000 for the year in general fund. You'll notice on page 10 that there is additional funds there, there's a Head Start project, sorry, and a long-term capital improvement project, and then there's a column called Other Governmental Funds. The two columns to the right of the general fund are your other major funds. To be a major fund, there's certain criteria that has to play out. Basically, they're considered primary or significant funds. And then that Other Governmental Funds is really an aggregate. That's a subtotal, that's all the other non-major funds, they're all scheduled in the back if you want to take a look at those. In that, those funds, you have an additional $2,400,000 in capital improvement and an additional $2 million in your aggregate, Other Governmental Funds. Total district-wide, 13,247,000 in fund balance. That really is the primary component of the basic financial statement. From page 12 all the way to the back is really the footnotes. So and that aggregate, that subsequent, subsequent basically, non-major fund schedules are in the back, so there's quite a few more financial statements in the back, but those are your basic. The rest of it is footnotes. So the majority of this book is really going through all the numbers that we just went through, all the detail, and giving you an explanation in more detail. So if you ever want to look up a number that I went through in the assets and liabilities or even some of the major revenues and expenditures, you can find it right in that section. Of course, there's a lot of pages there, a lot of reading, a lot of schedules, goes through your long-term debt, your capital assets, your cash position and what's made up of in the cash and so forth. So I won't go through any of that unless you want me to point out a page or two, but what I will do is talk a little bit about the single audit, which is way in the back. And page 60, 60 is the second opinion in the financial audit report that we issue, and that is the second one related to your grants. So a single audit, anytime you spend over a billion dollars, which you do, is required as almost like a secondary audit, happens simultaneously with your financial statement audit. And we issue an opinion on each major fund, each major federal fund and each major state fund, program, grants. And again, there's a schedule in there, we did issue a clean opinion on that. In addition to that, we do have to point out some internal control related issues as part of your grants, which we do in the back of the book. But page 63, starting is really where it lists really every single grant that you get as a district for the year, for 2024. So had a nice schedule in the back, just all of your federal grants first and all of your state grants and where they came from and how much. So you got good, good schedules there. And we'll conclude the report on page 69, and that is, I said there was a compliance finding and this is kind of a permanent finding, you always have had this one, preparation of annual financial report. This book here that we just went through and you have in front of you is a report that under the standards should be completed by the internal control of the district, i.e. you would complete that, hand it to us when we came in to do the audit. I don't know of a single district in Wisconsin that does that, I'm sure there's a few out there that do that. We see it a little bit more on the municipal side where some do, I would say probably 5% or less. In Wisconsin, you do prepare a report to DPI, Wisconsin DPI is your annual report, much like a financial statement, with everything that you have really in these financial statements, just not in the same form and not following the same GANB forms. Because you do that, we only had to show one finding, which is really just pointing out that we did prepare that report. Then there forever, it'll probably be there for a long time and most districts, if not all districts, have that. So again, no concerns there. The mitigating discussion here on this and why I bring it up, other than to point it out, is really the review of these financial statements that we prepare for you is important and that is a very robust process that we take seriously. We gave you a chance to look at it, we gave you a chance to look at all the entries we make and make sure you understand them and really take responsibility for all those. Again, not a whole lot of concern with your district that we have to worry about, but this meeting is also part of that process to get you as a governing body, me in front of you, and be able to ask questions. If at any time throughout the year, you're looking at this audit, you're looking at the next audit or a previous audit, you have any questions, that education from a governance standpoint is there and you can ask me questions at any time. Any questions on that before I conclude with the standards that are coming up this next summer? I just want to pause there and make sure there's no questions, any other pages you want me to go through, be happy to do that.
Go ahead, John.
And I will conclude with GASBI 101 is coming up for next summer's audit. And if you were listening to us either Stuart or myself give a presentation of the last two years, there's been two, and now this is the third consecutive GASBI in three years that have dealt with liabilities. The first one was leases, we talked a lot about that for many years leading up to that. Lease liability, taking inventory of all your leases, determine even in future whether you enter any leases. And last year we had subbid, as they're called, subscription-based IT arrangements, so similar concept to leases, except instead of equipment, it was software. For the first time ever, you had to capitalize some of that if applicable. And of course, only the larger material ones do you have to worry about. And going forward, you have to worry about any agreements that you would enter in. Well, now they're focusing on compensated absences. So this next year, the 2025 fiscal year, that will become effective and you will be thinking, if you're familiar with these financial statements, that you already have that on your books and it's true, you do, you already have compensated absences as a liability. What GASBI and the standard setters did is they changed the rules for that. It won't have a great impact on the workload of the district. I didn't say that with leases and subbits because it was a pretty high workload getting ready for that. You already keep track of this, your systems, your HR systems already keep track of everything, all the leave. Where it becomes a little bit more tricky is in addition to what you have on your books today, you have to pick up an amount that's unvested. And for the first time ever, they're saying now that if you accumulate a leave and you use it for time off, it is not a liability. It has never been that in past, only if you got paid for it. So that's a little bit of a difference there. So if you have X amount of sick leave and you take sick leave off and everybody takes X amount of hours on average off, you have to set that up and add that to a liability. So there is a little bit of work there. It isn't, we're not, we're not seeing a huge, a huge impact on that as far as the workload for municipalities right now that are doing that, but it will require some time, some effort to maybe some knowledge for what that has. We'll help you through that process, that is normal, as always, but again, again, the effect of it is going to be your liability to be one of, no doubt about it, so because you're adding to that. They're also picking up any other kind of leave that you might have that's not sick leave or vacation or something like that. I don't think that's going to affect too many school districts, there might be some getting there, not going to be a huge dollar amount, so usually it's not going to affect our work and your work.
John, does it, leave liability include all the bank leave?
Yep. Accumulate, has to accumulate, so anything that's accumulated will be picked up in addition to what you already have, so it's not going to change that necessarily, it's just going to add to it, perhaps.
But that could be substantial.
It could be. And that will only affect the government-wide, that will not affect anything that you report to DPI. So once again, it's another one kind of added on where a couple more pages of footnotes in here and then a liability added to the financial statements. You can see where they're going, I mean, it's pretty clear where they think there is a need as far as financial reporting in the entire country now and that with governments and then school districts is the liabilities are appreciated. So they hit leases, they hit subscription software, they hit compensated absences, I can't think of anything that's really left, so I think they'll probably leave that after this year, but all three of those added a lot of liabilities to municipal and school district financial statements. Any questions on that, otherwise I am finished.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
You didn't have any, Ron, do you have a question? Otherwise, we're looking for a motion.
Motion to approve the 2224 audit that is presented.
Motion by Ron, do we have a second? Second by Mike. Any additional questions or discussion on the motion for this topic? Any questions or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Aye. Anyone opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? Motion carries. Thank you, John.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. All right, we will be moving on to Board of Education business. First topic there this evening is the approval of the Head Start Community Assessment. Topic summary sheet was provided by Ryan Martinovich. There's a recommended motion from our Policy Council, anyone willing to make a motion on this topic? Nubs?
I vote to approve the Head Start 2024-2025 Community Assessment.
We have a motion by Nubs, and a second by Amber. Any questions or discussion on this motion or topic? Questions or discussion on this motion or topic? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Aye. Anyone opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? Motion carries on a voice vote. Next item on our agenda is the MAPS Head Start Self-Assessment. That topic summary sheet was also provided by Ryan Martinovich. There's a recommended motion from our Head Start Policy Council. We have a motion on this agenda item this evening. Ron?
Motion to approve the 2025 MAPS Head Start Self-Assessment.
Motion by Ron, do we have a second? Second by Nubs. Any discussion or questions in regards to this motion or this agenda item? Any questions or discussion on this motion or agenda item? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Aye. Anyone opposed, say nay. Do you have any abstentions? Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is the Educators Rising Club Advisor. Attached was a topic summary sheet from Heather Silberg. Our Finance Human Resources Committee has a recommended motion on this topic. Anyone willing to make a motion on this topic this evening? Jaclyn?
I recommend the addition of the Educators Rising Club Advisor position and authorize hiring the advisor this spring to ensure a successful launch of the club in fall of 2025.
Motion by Jaclyn, a second by Ron. Any discussion or questions in regards to this motion or topic? Anyone would like to add on that one, the stuff?
Yeah, thank Heather for her work on this, I think educators, we've talked a lot at community level, on the board level, about the need to grow your own educators and that type of situation. And we're excited to see what this club can do to get young, high school-age people tuned in to education as a career. This, this club and this advisorship will be very, very vital to that.
Thank you, Shannon. Any additional discussion or questions on this motion or topic? Ron?
This has been going on for a while, is that correct?
Not here in Murrell, but yes, districts around us have had it on like 10-plus years in some of them.
Thank you.
All right, any additional questions or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Aye. Anyone opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? Motion carries. Next item on our agenda is the Coach Positions for the SEL or Social Educational Learning Curriculum. Topic summary sheet was provided by Amber Aluska and there is a recommended motion from our Finance Human Resources Committee. Jaclyn?
I recommend approval of the SEL Coach Positions as presented to be funded from DPI mental health funds.
Motion by Jaclyn, do we have a second? Second by Amber, and others willing. Any questions or discussion on this motion or agenda item? Any questions or discussion on this motion or agenda item? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Aye. Anyone opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? Motion carries unanimously on a voice vote. Next item on our agenda is the Plasma Cutter Purchase for the Fab Lab. Topic summary sheet was provided by Josh Zaluski from Fab Lab Director. There is a recommended motion from our Finance Human Resources Committee, anyone willing to make a motion? Ron?
Motion to approve the purchase of a CNC plasma cutter for the Fab Lab from the Arc Light Dynamics using grant funds.
Motion by Ron, do we have a second? We have a second by Mike. Any discussion or questions in regards to this motion or agenda item? Would you like to add, I know we've been getting more and more requests and that's an original piece of equipment, right?
Yes, and our Fab Lab has started doing more and more work with the community, which is awesome. This, this purchase is funded through CT incentive grants and through Crowberg grants, so that's a nice way for us to pick up pretty crazy equipment at no cost out of our general fund.
And I noticed through that committee work that maybe prior to, contrary to popular belief, those incentive funds have been used all throughout different things in the district, not just the Fab Lab. I mean, there was the commercial kitchen and just some other projects that get spread around for student and staff needs, so certainly something we've utilized, this is just one example of working with those grant funds to make things happen. Any additional discussion or questions on this motion or agenda item? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Aye. Anyone opposed, say nay. Do you have any abstentions? Motion carries. Next item on our agenda is the approval of the Contract of Cobison Busines. Topic summary sheet was provided by Mark Powell. There is a recommended motion from our Finance Human Resources Committee. Any board member willing to make a motion on this? Nubs?
I vote to approve the contract with Cobison Busines.
Motion by Nubs, do we have a second? Second by Mike. This time I'd ask for any discussion or questions, we probably should start maybe with some highlights from Mark or Shannon.
Yeah, at the January meeting, the board approved the bid from Cobison, as you know, Quindorf did the bus business after this year, and so a committee reviewed the four bids that we received from noted key county carriers. And as I said, the board approved to go with Cobison, it's just a follow-up to have the contract in place. It has been reviewed by legal counsel and it kind of mirrors a couple of other districts that have Cobison as their provider, so it would go. And we had some preliminary discussions, but they're kind of waiting for a final approval and they do have a line on the property to build their depot at some point, so we're moving forward.
Any things to add? A lot of work went into that process.
Yeah, a lot of work and a lot of people and the process kind of started back in August when Nick and I went out to visit with Quindorf, said they announced that they were retiring, so we've never had to select a bus vendor in our community, maybe ever, and so that was new for us and so Mark did a nice job of keeping the word out and our so that was new for us. And so Mark did a nice job of keeping the word out, and our P's, we got the bids, and a lot of us worked together to review those bids. And it was just a nice process. We're happy with Colson, they came through with line colors and a quarter of work with them. We will have some changes, and we'll start communicating ourselves once we know as far as, you know, routing and those kind of things. Because we've kind of developed this model of we've always done busing this way. And we've developed maybe some bad habits over the years, or however that goes. So, so more to come on that, but what happened with Colson and the contract with it.
We certainly have Merrillized Busing, to your point. We've had many local bus vendors who tried to go above and beyond. And some of that, like you said, was even more serviced than what state statute requires. And we'll have to look at that from a financial and community basis and what, what makes sense. They're going to start by trying to mirror what's out there and make some recommendations and continue to, to work what's best for MAPS. So it'd be, say a lot of things going on. One of the extra things that I learned on at the state convention was not everybody gets busing your transportation bids. I think we said that through this process. We were very fortunate to have multiple competitive bids instead of having one to look at and try to negotiate against ourselves, so to speak. So any additional discussion or questions for, for this agenda item? A motion for either Mark or Shannon?
I think they should just be noted too, that they're going to do their own dispatching, right?
Yes. We will have a point of contact based on emergent need or to make sure if we need to be sharing information of something that happens. So they'll have a first point of contact through Nick's team and maybe for a while even Nick himself. People watching what's going on.
That might be who's the pick.
Congratulations. He likes wearing hats. Likes making hats. That being said, any other discussion or questions? Hearing none, we do have a motion on the floor. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? Motion carries. Next item on our agenda is the Budget Preparations and Planning for 2025-2026. Attached was a topic summary sheet from Shannon Murray and other, other district administrators helping with that. There is a recommended motion from our Finance Human Resources Committee. Anyone willing to make a motion on this agenda item? Ron?
Motion to approve the transfer use of up to $800,000 of fund balance if needed to address the potential budget deficits presented in the '25-26 budget.
We have a motion by Ron, do we have a second? Second by Jaclyn. Before I turn it over for discussion or questions, Shannon or Mark, anyone want to speak first?
So this was discussed at length at HR Finance, we came in with a proposed budget plan, which included a mixture of staff reductions, building and department budget reductions, some salary increase information, parent information. There were recommendations that fell short of CPI and proposed fund balance draw, if you will. And so after some discussion, you can see the edits that were on there are in red. So this is draft two of that budget development plan. And it gives the salary increases up to CPI for staff and changed that fund balance draw to the number that's reflected there. Just really appreciated the conversation and the ideas and the collaboration on that process at the community.
Talking about process for those that don't have the documents in front of them, we were talking about the budget development and what you're looking at here besides using some of the reserves or the fund balance as stated, if needed, up to 800,000. You were tasked to bring to the board and at the committee level. And tonight, we're talking about $1.3 million, correct? So not everyone is seeing that, I guess, in the audience or those viewing. So it was not an easy task, and this has been, you know, people talk about it's rightsizing because of declining enrollments. That doesn't happen in every grade. We're not just losing an entire grade of third graders. We're losing one or two people or students here and there. So to do staff reductions, we hope that can be by attrition, retirements or resignations. Some of the building and department budgets, you guys are mindful, and we're going to have to continue to, to look at that. And, and I would agree, there was a lot of people there and having board members hear that at committee and repeated here. I guess that was a very solid discussion, I felt, in, in looking at hearing the fact that it was proposed just, just to do our due diligence, to increase salaries, to be safe by 2% instead of 3%. But everybody hearing that it was very likely, based on what's going on right now with our reserves, with what's going on at the state budget preparation, that that was going to be the first thing put back and looking at not having a concern for the rest of, of the year. And staff being concerned of, of not being made whole and having to look at neighboring districts just to say that you are appreciated. We, we want to do what we can. That, that's how I felt. And I'm not speaking for all nine members of the board, I'm speaking for myself. But I, I heard that echoed throughout the room that night. Why, if we're going to put that back, would we have that concern or that worry? I mean, Ron, Jaclyn, anyone who was here, right? I mean, that's, that's how I felt. Why try to be, having people have that as one more thing on their plate to be concerned with as we try to finish up all the good work that's being put into place. So I just wanted to, I guess echo what you're saying. A lot of discussion went into that. The diligence was done. That was, you know, where can all of this come from? However, definitely thinking that was the right step. And like you said, probably a situation where that would have been put back may have been a moot point once we find out what the state budget is and where we are at, at the end of June again. But we don't know then. So it, it was, I think, just a step, you know, in the right positive direction potentially, depending on this vote. But certainly was a situation where it was well thought of, well discussed. And thank you for all that collaboration.
And to your point, I mean, to be clear, that there are still plenty of cuts in this budget proposal. So, you know, three to four FTEs, three to $400,000 is a lot now. Some of that is rightsizing. We hope to have it all through attrition, as you said, but there will be fewer staff next year. To take $300,000 out of, you know, maintenance and IT and CNI and building, that's, that's going to have an impact. And so there are still real cuts in this budget. And the, the reason that we looked at this replenish model was because we're up against some time frames, some time frames on, on staff, on those kind of things. So I think it, I think it's a solid plan. I wouldn't want to live in this world of dipping the fund balance very long. But we think between, we're still waiting on health insurance. We expect it to come a little bit more favorable than what we anticipated here. So some of those things will contribute to that. Potentially smaller drawn up on balance.
Go ahead, Ron.
To me, the two words in here are if needed. We might not, this might be a moot point. At least we got it recovered. I guess for the budget.
You know, and even if it's a portion of that or a high portion of that, we're, we're aware in advance. And one of the questions that I get, and I don't know if everybody else gets that, but when you, when you talk about attrition, and I don't want to go through this and slow our vote, but if you have three members of your special education department or three out of four third grade teachers leaving the district, we're going to have to replace them and move somebody around or do something. I mean, sometimes people hear that there are openings on weekends and don't understand how are you hiring more and more people when you say we need to have less and less? We're looking at that numbers, and we still need to educate our, our students and do things that are within statute and are safe in all our buildings. A lot of, a lot of moving pieces. So continue to update people on that. As, as we hear more, hopefully sooner than later, I believe isn't this the, according to Governor Evers, the year of children in his budget address? I mean, he's usually very aggressive and hoping he'll get some portion of that. But we'll, we'll see where that, where that goes. Any other discussion or questions on this motion or topic? Hearing none, bring this to a vote. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? Motion carries. Next item on our agenda is the MAPS Nursing Services for 2025-2026. Attached was a topic summary sheet prepared by Amber Alusta and recommended motions that have been brought to us by both the CTP and Financial Finance Human Resources Committee. Any board members willing to make a motion on this particular agenda item? Ron?
Motion to discontinue our 4K-12 contract with the Lincoln County Health Department beginning with the 2025-2026 school year and move it forward with the hiring of the 1.0 full-time employee district nurse and 2.0625 full-time health aides.
No motion by Ron, do we have a second? A second by Amber. Anything you'd like to add on that, Shannon?
Yeah, I appreciate the work that Amber's done on this. This will be a bit of a change for us. But we're, we're excited for the potential of this, particularly on the health aid side. A question was asked, what if we can't find a 2.625 TE health aides? And we had that discussion. We may have to start the year with one and adjust, and however that goes, but that's, that's.
All right.
What are we going to have to pay to find a nurse?
So financially, this plan is in wash with COVID currently.
Is that part of the plan?
Any other questions or discussion from board members?
I will, because they're here. You've enjoyed a long history of good service with our, the county health. So thank you.
You're welcome.
Hearing no additional questions or discussion for the vote. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? Motion carries unanimously on a voice vote. Next item on our agenda is the Friends of the Merrill School Forest donation of a 2024 Skidoo snowmobile and accessories for the Merrill School Forest. Attached was a donation form and cover memo by School Forest Director Russ Nolan. It's a reminder that due to the fact that the donation is over the $2,500 limit set in Policy 7230, this donation comes to us separately as a board for approval versus being in consent agenda. Anyone willing to make a motion on this agenda item? Mike?
Motion to approve the donation of 2024 Skidoo snowmobile and accessories from the Friends of the Merrill School Forest valued at $9,462.78 for maintaining the school forest, property and providing an emergency vehicle during snow conditions to transport individuals that need it at the Merrill School Forest.
Motion by Mike, do we have a second? Second by Amber. Any discussion or questions on this motion? Certainly think it's appropriate to thank our Friends of the Merrill School Forest for working with us once again for some, some needed equipment. Any additional questions or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? Motion carries unanimously on a voice vote. Next item on our agenda is the Travis Sevotrova donation of three animal mounts for the Merrill School Forest. Attached was a donation form and cover memo from School Forest Director Russ Nolan. Here again, Policy 7230 is utilized because the donation is over that $2,500 limit set within there. Anyone willing to make a motion? Mike?
Motion to approve the donation of three animal moms from Travis Sevotrova valued at $6,950 for educational enrichment pertaining to wildlife education lessons and activities at the Merrill School Forest.
Motion by Mike, we have a second by Nubs. Any discussion or questions in regards to this motion or topic? Once again, thank you to Travis for thinking of the Merrill School Forest. He came up with this donation. Any other questions or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? Motion carries. Next, as we approach the consent agenda, I'll ask if anyone would like anything, both from our consent agenda to be handled individually. Seeing no hands up, I would ask if someone is willing to make the consent agenda motion this evening. Ron?
Motion to approve consent agenda items A through D, which includes minutes every January 15, 2025 meetings, claims, vouchers and receipts totaling $4,104,236.71. Donations totaling $917.50. And the attached personnel report contingent upon release of contracts for hiring and upon satisfaction of the appropriated liquidated damage for resignations if applicable.
Motion by Ron, we have a second. Second by Mike. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? Motion carries. Next item on our agenda is items for future meetings. It's an opportunity for board members. If they thought of new topics or heard of, heard of things in the community, they want to bring to the whole board or to a committee, and want to make it recognized publicly that you'd like to do so, now is that time on our agenda to do that. And we do have a running list going. We could mostly clean this now, actually. That way we keep track of that and go from there. Any board members have items that they want to make sure that we're not missing in the, the next upcoming month or two as the school year winds down? All right. If you do have any suggestions for committee meetings or for upcoming board meetings, get ahold of Mr. Murray or myself, and we will go from there, or the chairperson for the corresponding committee. Just a reminder that tomorrow morning, the radio scheduled program, as you hear on Thursday mornings, approximately 8:15 a.m. on Blue J 730 radio, you'll hear from a member of the school district. Tomorrow morning, it'll be Mr. Murray and I, myself, talking about tonight's board meeting. Reminder of future meetings, the next Head Start Policy Council meeting is Tuesday, March 11th at 5:30 p.m. at Audit Fine River School for Young Learners. We have a busy night on Wednesday, March 12th, starting at 3:30 p.m. here in the boardroom with the Facilities Committee meeting, followed by 4:30 p.m. CTP or Curriculum Technology Pupil Services Committee meeting. The Finance Human Resources Committee meets immediately following CTP, but more sooner than. but sooner than 5 p.m. here in the boardroom on that March 12th date. Bridges Virtual Academy Governance Board next meets on Thursday, March 12th at 12:45 p.m. As you can imagine, they meet virtually. Our Safety Committee meets on Monday, March 17th, 12:30 p.m. here in the boardroom. School Forest Advisory Meeting is Monday, March 17th, 4 p.m. out at the School Forest. Our next regularly scheduled monthly board meeting will be held on Wednesday, March 19th, beginning at 5:30 p.m. here in the boardroom. Those are just some reminders about upcoming future meetings in the district. This time, we were going to have a contemplated motion to adjourn into executive closed session. However, at this time, we did not have any new parental requests for student opt-out of state assessment, so that will not be necessary this evening. So instead of asking for a motion to move into executive closed session, I will be looking for a motion to adjourn. Motion by Nubs. Do we have a second? Second by Mike to adjourn at 6:41 p.m. All those in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Say nay. Motion is adjourned. Thank you all for your attendance. Good evening.